Are you ready?
Yep.
Okay, it's 5:30. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen, Cole, Parliament, Mayor Heinitz.
Here. Need a motion to approve the agenda? A motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Don't believe we have any public comments?
Well, the vast audience would like to say something.
Officer, police chief. He's quiet. There you go. So, we're here to City Hall work session. You know, the thought is, I think at some point, obviously, we're gonna have to do something. And tonight, we take some time to start talking through. Is this in the capital improvement plan?
Nope, we don't have a cost estimate for it.
Do we now get a cost estimate when we had the space need?
We did. We had the space needs study, and that's somewhere, well, eight and a half to nine, 9.2 million, I think, is what it was. But that was looking at probably the site up by the Methodist Church. We didn't look at renovating this area. We looked at building new here, which may or may not include a second story, or acquisition of property, and then the site up by the church.
And that was a pretty grandiose plan, as I recall.
Yeah, it had plenty of room for expansion, among a few other things. So, I think it was 32,000 square feet, I think, is what it was.
And that's what they're saying?
Well, that, based upon, and that was looking at a 20-year growth period. You know, so looking at it. For instance, City Hall, we had offices for engineer, assistant engineer, building inspector, code enforcement officer, park and rec director, HR administrator, and a couple of spares. And the PD, I think they had, I added it up today, 13 offices. Six vacant offices, a squad room, two lieutenants, a detective's room. We had a workout room, which I didn't think was big enough.
Was that, you said 13, was that for the PD?
Yeah.
Overall?
Yeah, total offices, I think it was office spaces with 13. Record storage, it had a community room, had council chambers. Indoor parking with Sally Port and all that good stuff. So it was, it was a pretty large building.
I'm curious with the new land acquisition that we have over here. Currently, then, how big of a facility could be?
That's what ISG proposal would really help us with, too. And they would look and see what we could do.
Now, I, that first one was done prior to COVID, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I just feel like, too.
Everything was prior to COVID, wasn't it?
Right, yeah. And I also feel like, too, with that is, I think the way we do business and the way people operate have changed a lot, too. And I know, like, 20 years out, but I don't foresee as many office spaces. I mean, you see a lot of these big, huge banks, they're still not, yeah, they're empty. They're not bringing people back. They're, they're like, no, we can be ju, you know, so I just feel like I wanna think of that, too, in mind, that maybe we don't need something as big as we once thought. Just because times are changing, and COVID's really proven that.
But we are a customer service industry. And if somebody comes in, somebody comes into City Hall, you know, they wanna talk to, and we need to have people available to answer their questions, whether it's park and rec, or engineering, or whatever. We aren't. I think it'd be very difficult for us to farm out or work from home.
Yeah, I understand that, too, but I just, I just can't.
We have so many files and records and stuff that we have to keep by, by law. And so it would be really hard to, to work from home. Long, it'd be hard long term. So page two is kind of just a list of items that we've seen in our current facility that we're having issues with, that, whether it be lack of office space, or out of room for files and storage, or things that are, that are breaking, or leaks, flooring issues, ADA compliance issues. Those are some of the things that we're seeing currently with our current facility.
Where are all our files at? Are they in the basement?
A lot of them are in the basement.
In, in, most of the files are underneath the PD, the west half of the PD. So that's not where the leak is. The leak in the PD that we've been chasing for a while.
Years.
But I mean, is it just kinda humid down there, or not?
We've got a couple of dehumidifiers running.
I worry about preservation of them.
Some of the files we have that can't be electronic restored.
Well, you have to keep copy of your minute, all of your council minutes, agendas, and that thing forever. You gotta keep forever, no matter if it's electronic or not. And whether that's South Dakota being behind times, you know, that's up to them. But that, that is what we are required by law to do. And there's a number of other things. I have a record, record retention book of the things that we have to follow.
I don't think you'd wanna keep your minutes and that kind of stuff, especially you gotta keep them there. I don't think you'd wanna keep them papered.
We have to. So we do have them electronic for kind of a backup, but we have to keep them paper. We don't have an option there.
That'll probably change it, unfortunately.
But just stuff you're not, like, physically accessing, I guess my point to that was you can always do cold storage, too. I mean, if you can access the minutes on a computer, you're just keeping it because you have to keep it. And you can rent a storage unit a whole lot cheaper than a great big huge building or files. I don't know how much of that we're talking about, but.
You know, to me, it's not a matter of, I think the need is definitely there. It's just a matter of how can we put this thing together?
Correct.
And unless we look at possibilities, we'll never, we'll always sit here and talk about the same thing.
And, and that's one of the things why we wanna take a look at this ISG study. For me, at least, in my thinking.
Don't call it a study.
Study, sorry. You know, first, we need to evaluate what we've got. Is it, are they worth renovating? You know, are they structurally sound? You know, like I said the other night, Larry was chasing wires, and there were those cloth-covered wiring. We have no clue where it goes to. So we need to figure out if these buildings are worth adding on to or remodeling. Once that question is answered, then we can take a look at, do we need to tear down and build new here? Or can we renovate what we have and get some cost estimates so that we can at least start talking about it in relationship to other projects? You know, and that includes, 'cause I need to bring it up, too. You've got the Public Works Building, too.
Yep.
That's out there. You know, that's in need of, of something. I really enjoy the faded green metal walls, but eventually, they're gonna have to go away, too. So, we need, we need to get numbers so that we can know what we're talking about. So that, is it 100,000? Is it 5 million? Is it, you know, where does it fit, and where can it fit into our CIP process?
And we'll just have to do a plan with the footprint that we currently have here now. And that's what, just what we'll have to work off. When we did the space needs study, we're trying to think long-term, trying to think in the future, and how big do we, you know, are we going to need this? So this, we'll just have to work with what we got, and we know that.
I think we reversed that. I think we should've done this first, but I guess that's water under the bridge.
Yeah.
So on page three is, I put the bidding requirements in there because this is where, we have to follow South Dakota codified law. So the first thing there is any public improvement that involves an expenditure over $100,000 or more, we have to bid it out. We don't have any other choices. We have to bid it out. That's what the law is. When you do that, in order to advertise for those bids, we need big documents such as plans and specs. Well, we cannot do this in-house. We cannot do this, this has to be done by an architect. We don't have those capabilities to do that here. We cannot hire a contractor to come in and do improvements over $100,000. And to do anything that we're, we really need to do now is gonna be most likely more than $100,000. Even if we wanted to add on to the north side of the police department where we have that empty land, well, that's gonna be more than $100,000.
I looked, I looked back in the files, and we do have them on our facilities here. The PD was built in 1997 for 220,000. So, and that just kinda showed, and that was in 97.
97 for what?
220,000. Just the PD portion. The building inspections portion of the building was built in 2003. And then this council chambers and the food pantry area was built, or renovated in '07. So I always look at the PD as fairly new, as well as the building inspections. But they're, and they're pushing 25 to 20 years old.
Has the museum gotten their stuff out of?
Yes.
Most of it.
I think they have all of it now.
Do they? I've been in there lately.
So that's emptied out?
Yep.
Except for the water meters.
Yeah, now we have water meters for the next phase. So I just put the architect in there from what I can find on South Dakota law. You know, we had, based on the square footage and the type of building that we're gonna undertake, you have to have the services and architect that are required. One of the laws that I saw is if it's more than 7,000 square feet, that you're gonna do new construction, enlargement, or an alteration, that you have to hire an architect. Well, our current City Hall facilities, our current facilities is 13,000 square feet. So even if we're gonna alterate this and renovate this, then we have to hire an architect. But it also goes back to the bidding requirements. If we're over $100,000, then we need big plans and specs, and we can't do that, so we need an architect. So that's why we're trying to bring this ISG proposal here. And Josh is here from ISG to answer any questions you have or go over the proposal. But that's why we're bringing this proposal in front of you, is to, A, number one task, look at the structural analysis of the current facility and determine if they can even withhold a renovation. And then task two would be to run through a concept floor plan that we could do.
Well, square footage?
Did you get it twerked?
To the property line, it's about 65 feet, give or take. 67, but.
And we bought the land right behind that, right? So, like, 65 feet, but how, how deep that do we own behind that?
How deep is our lot? 150.
Street to back, we're talking about?
Yep, there's an alley back there that's still there.
Does that hook up into our parking lot, or no?
Yeah, the alley, there's, there's a 16-foot platted alley just to the east of the house we bought. It's not improved. There's trees growing in it, but it's still planted.
Okay. So that would be another access point. I'm just thinking, with the PD, that's another access point.
Yeah.
So we bought?
That.
Yes, that, that whole.
Yep.
And so like, in this parking lot back here, the fence is in that backyard. The distance between, like, our parking lot and the fence, that's the alleyway? Not really there.
Yeah, the edge, the edge of the blacktop is, we think is the edge of the alley. You're pretty darn close.
Pretty close now.
Could we pave that to go out, or is that, is that way or no?
Yes.
Because we now own it from the street, but we, we don't own it, like, behind the repair shop.
No.
We, well, there's an alley. The alley goes all the way. Yeah. So this line is the alley. So that's probably right away.
But if we were going, we, if we're gonna build in it, we'd have to vacate it, which means we'd get eight feet, and maybe we'd get eight feet. If everybody agrees that they want it.
We would maintain it?
No, no. Yeah. If we were gonna build in it, other than a driveway.
No, if we built the alley, then we would take that.
Yeah, it's, it's a platted public right of way.
Because if we could add on to the PD side of the building, we could add a huge addition on the lot of the current building.
I almost envisioning, it has to be a piece now, though. Like, you, you know what I'm saying? Don't, I mean, I don't know, but almost like stages.
Build it in stages?
We would have to stage something, just to continue operations.
If it's possible.
Unless you, it seems to me the first, the first step is to, to get the study.
Yeah, you, you gotta find out.
And then get an idea of what the recommendations are. And we're not gonna sit here and try to plan out, okay, we're gonna build this here, and we're gonna build that there, we're gonna throw this down. That's why we wanted to do the study, or that not the study.
Not the study.
What is it?
Proposal.
Proposal.
Review.
Review.
To give us some direction on what is possible. You know, I could sit here and say, oh, I think we should do this, and we should do that. But I, I would probably have to rely on that. The good news is, it looks as though a lot is possible. A lot is possible, and that's that. I'm not gonna draw plans, but it looks as though a lot is possible.
Do we need to go beyond the task one to get the cost? Is that where we get the cost?
Have to do one and two, it looks like.
So I'm, I'm particularly interested in task one, to see if the building is structurally sound. But then task two is the floor plans, but we would need to do that to get the cost estimate?
Push the money, or push the button, Josh.
So the, for like the renovation, the cost of the renovation remodel, that would be that second task, yes.
But then, to do the bidding, that's number three. But we're not, we're a long way from that.
Yeah, what we wanna do is get numbers. First of all, what can we do here? What is, what's that cost, what's the potential cost? And then, like I said, then we can put it into the CIP mix and evaluate it against other projects. Or, you know, we've looked at all kinds of different financing scenarios, from geo bond, which would be a referendum, to a sales tax bond, you know, which we're looking at for, for reconstruction projects, to a lease purchase, to a lease, to a design bill, to a construction manager at risk, to. Fund balance.
Funds, not anymore.
To all kinds of stuff. So, but we don't have a number.
What do we have as the number for Raleigh's place?
It is, the building is between four and 4.4 million. Site prep or sites, one and a half to 1.8, so it's somewhere between five and a half and 6.2. And that's for a 20,000-square-foot facility.
And that was all the concrete?
Yeah, that included, I think, the big apron and everything else.
How come, I understand that's an ideal world, that you'd want something like that, right? If you're gonna do it, do it right. But we're kind of throwing pains here, right? Like, we don't have all that. But I go out in the industrial park, and they're all, like, it's just Morton buildings. I mean, they're good enough for private business. I don't understand why, to get a nicer building up, with less cost, why couldn't we do that?
We could certainly.
All this concrete.
We would certainly take a look at metal. You know, we could do that as bid alternates, if, when we get to that phase.
Yeah.
I'm a big proponent of concrete for public works buildings.
And that makes sense, but just knowing.
The main reason why, Vicki, is if we have a disaster, you want your maintenance building to stay. You want that to make sure that it is there, because you need those pieces of equipment in there to clean up your town. That's the main reason why.
Yeah, I, I get that.
We do that as bid alternate. Review it's time.
Yeah, whenever we have money, right?
Yep. Just to, just to add, there, there are options, like you were saying, exploring, like a metal building. So what we've done on some other ones, to maintain some of that durability, is have a precast, just kind of six-foot skirt around it, and then metal building on top. It's kind of a, a good compromise, because then you do have some of that protection in case inevitably there might, someday, a truck might go, you know, pull up too far. And if it's a metal building, it might go through that. But if you have that precast around the building, the base, you kind of protect that. And then on top of that, you can have the metal building, which is more cost-effective, and you kind of get a, a good balance between the two. So that's an option that could certainly be looked at if that was.
I would say the likelihood of a truck striking a building is greater than a tornado striking a building, to see.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think we need to do, see if we designed something to be tornado-reveal capable. And I, and I also don't think.
Yeah, I know.
I don't think, look at it, I don't think precast is all that much more expensive than metal building.
That's why you do it as a bid, as a bid alternate. You bid both metal and concrete.
Right now, it's a very unique bidding situation. I, I would say it, it is not crazy. It's not a significant amount more. Lead times are one of the biggest issues right now with, even precast. Uh, because it was, metal buildings were, prices were going crazy with steel. Lead times were crazy, so then everybody went to precast, and now it's kinda, yeah.
So why feasibly couldn't we just do task one and reconvene? I struggle moving forward with floor plans on something that we don't even have prioritized. You know, Vicki had a very good point about everything being fluid. Creating floor plans right now for something that we have not even prioritized as being a top item, that, and spending money on a study when potentially we come back with a lot of existing concerns that make it not feasible to even do this. I think that that seems to be a stretch. I, I'm gonna guess there's probably gonna be some concerns that come out of task number, number one, and they're probably gonna be immediate concerns, and all of our projects have immediate concerns. And that's where, I think that's where we came up with doing the CIP, is because we have a lot of urgent needs. And we had to figure out which one went higher than, than the next one. So I, I have a real problem coming up with a floor plan for something that we don't even have at the top of our CIP list, when that floor plan may be totally irrelevant by the time we actually get to it. Task number one, maybe.
So if you do task number one and find that it is not feasible to do an addition, would you draw a floor plan then, on a building that we can't remodel?
If the, so if the findings, task one, were basically something is structurally not well with the building, we're not gonna throw together, you know, a floor plan, knowing that the building would have to be, because that just wouldn't be doing you justice. It wouldn't be doing, you know, really anyone at that point, knowing the building would have to be. I'm not saying that's where it's at, but in that hypothetical.
Personally, I, I don't, I don't think you have to do them together, because you're gonna have to determine what you can use, can't use, can do, can't do. And I think it would be a waste of, of time, quite frankly, just to do task one. I, I think you at least have to, yes, you have to find out if it's structurally, and a building built in 2007 is gonna be structurally sound. We, we should, we'll be able to use it. But what are we gonna do with it from then? And so I don't, I think you're just spinning your wheels if you just do number one.
So on the old, on the old building, you know, the bank part of it, I don't know when that was built. Any idea?
Early 1900s.
Okay. And they built them solid at that point. But would you do, like, soil borings and stuff to see? How are you gonna tell if that part of the building is structurally sound?
So we would, we would look at the entire building. We would look at, you know, it wouldn't necessarily be doing soil boring, testing the soil, unless there was reason to believe that we needed to dig underground. But it would be looking at getting down in the basement, looking at the foundation, looking at the structure. I think last time, I didn't actually poke my head around here, but you know, there's some bricks kind of off. Just understanding if there's any damage behind, that's going on that we can't see. And part of that study is not only just the structural analysis to see what state it's in, but then if you were to look at an addition, it's also understanding the structure, how it's spanning, what it's rated. Can it take more load? Can you add on to it, just to understand how the building could be added on to?
So Brian, is this looking at, again, keeping PD and City Hall all as one?
Yeah.
Still doing the same?
This site.
That, you still, yeah, I just, it wasn't, making sure. So then, when you, they do the two to three concept floor plans, because I strongly believe, no offense, chief, but they need a garage they can pull in and out of and take victims to and from, instead of going out in public. And so, so that's something that would be taken in consideration with all these floor plans?
Yep, when, when we get to the floor plan stage, that's gonna be one of the critical things for the PD is indoor parking, Sally Port.
Yeah.
To, to bring evidence in, it's in a secure location, to bring victims in, et cetera, et cetera. So that's all part of that floor planning process and stage, or the second step.
We would look at this building, too. Both buildings.
You know, and I, I agree, Dana, that it's hard to prioritize a project that isn't on the capital improvement plan. I, I certainly agree with that. But anything that's done in terms of concept plan is not money wasted. It will be there when the time is right for us to do it. And I think, if you're gonna start on this project, don't, don't just, don't go halfway.
If you go through all three stages here, I mean, I don't have any idea what this 6% to 8% cost of construction would be. I mean, you're, you're moving forward with doing this.
I think three is way out there. I, I, I wouldn't worry about three, because three would, at that point, you will have to put it into your capital improvement plan. Because you're gonna, now you're gonna have to find the money.
Yeah, we're not approving three tonight. Three tonight, if you see the note under task two, the design team will not begin task three until the city brand provides approval for, to proceed. We're not talking about task three right now. And I just wanna mention that City Hall was in the CIP plan. It's in there. It's noted there. It's just not in the five-year plan.
Right. We have some money allocated for something, for the wall or something, don't we? Like 80,000 or something, some sort of?
Yeah, we've got 80,000 in maintenance.
Maintenance.
Stuff that comes up through the year.
Okay, just, just so I'm clear. You start out with task one, and that's evaluating the structure, saying, yeah, it's feasible. You get to the point where you say, no, it's, it's not something that would be feasible or wise to add on to remodel or whatever. What would task two then imply if you said, number one, that's not a feasible option to add to, or?
Probably wouldn't be task two.
There probably wouldn't be task two. You would then come to us and say, yeah, that's a no-go. It's not gonna work, right?
Correct, yes. It'd be a, I mean, depending on what we found, we'd present, and I would anticipate after task one, before we're moving on to, you know, task two, we would come back, present the findings to you all. So you had the information before we got approval to go on to the next task, just so it's, you know, so you do have that information before we move on.
But what if you, what if you can go on to, like, because if you said the PD is newer, right? Okay, so if the PD is newer, you could possibly go there, but have to tear down, like, where Brian's office is, right?
Could, yeah.
Is it part of the old office, or is it, or is there a newer, and is it just a middle section?
The middle section where you walk in, the front door, is the original bank building.
Okay.
And then.
So that's one that really has been questioned.
Yeah, and then where Christina's office is at, I, I got no clue where that was added on, or did my office was added on? Sometime probably in the 70s. Well, I, I don't know if those were pre-existing buildings that the city purchased when it became a city.
I think the building was added on in?
'03.
'03, and the PD was added on '07.
No, PD was '97.
Or '97.
'97.
The only thing we're on problems right now with PD is the thirst.
The basement, but upstairs.
Well, where was the PD before?
In my office.
Cozy.
That's why I put bathroom.
No, well, yeah, but that wasn't the city administrator office when it was the PD. That was just.
Yeah, I mean, for the PD, that was still cozy.
Because the administrator's office is where Doris sits now.
Yeah. And where Christina and Tamir was the council chambers.
That was the council chambers.
Yeah. When I first started on PNC, that's where our meetings were at. It's not there.
So even if we do what wanted to, then it's not saying we're gonna go, go through. Because I agree with Dan. I, I struggled with the CIP, because we signed her a couple months ago, and Jeff wanted to do a road for Aston Park, which is very busy, and no one wanted to do it because it wasn't the CIP. And that was, what, 40,000, Jeff?
No, this, this is.
Get to the CIP.
I know.
Get the numbers for a CIP.
But I think we're still spending 30 grand that isn't in the CIP, and that's one. But I think we're still spending 30 grand that isn't in the CIP, and Jeff wants to spend 40. And you know what I'm saying, I'm just saying that, I just, I, I understand there was a need, there's no, I mean, you look at it, I understand that. But I also think, depending on what they come back, we might have to, I have a feeling we might have to be really creative.
I just, I just
Struggle as a business person, all these studies, it just drives me crazy.
It's a proposal.
It's a study, come on.
We had floor plans already presented to us, and that worked.
I, I think you'll be surprised how much what we have can be used. I mean, I've been through a lot of remodeling projects, they look bad early, but, uh, it's amazing what can get done.
So we would then in, incorporate the space study into this information, tailor that, scale that down?
Yeah, scale it down.
The space need study eliminated everything from the ground and started all new.
But I mean, we could use some pieces of it.
And so, um, part of that task two, I don't, actually, I don't know if it was up there, because what we would do either, either way to understand that concept plan is review that space study that was done, you know, anticipating that rather than 20 years down the road, maybe it's five, 10, or whatever we would decide that the, we'd want to look at. We would revise that, you know, the, the number of offices, number of everything, to align with what the new goal would be. So that would be also part of that task two, is really right sizing the, uh, the space needs, I guess.
Who did that one?
The space needs?
Yep, yep.
So can you also, like Tammy has the core project in phases? When you do, when you put these out to us, could you, I mean, give us an option if we do it all at once, this? Or you could phase one, phase, you know what I'm saying, because let's face it, financially
Once you get this task three
Yeah, once, but that's something, is that not done in task two? Is that something done in task three? I'm just saying, is it possible to?
So when we're laying out the, when we would go through a floor plan, we would take into consideration potential phasing, just anticipating that could be an option. Um, so, you know, just understanding sequencing, if you're tearing down a certain area or affecting a certain area, you're gonna offset some people, so just trying to understand where and how the order of things could be done while we're laying out the floor plan. Um, so we certainly could break it out to just have a phase, a high-level phasing plan at that point.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
It makes sense.
So Mayor, what you're saying is that if we get the costs of this, and then we also look at the costs of the, um, public works building, then we can analyze that to see if it fits in the CIP, so we don't forget that.
We're, you know, this is, this is not a project that's gonna happen right away. I mean, it's, it's something, though, that we've got to at least get, get some base on and find out what it's gonna cost, and then we have to prioritize it. Is it the most high priority? I'm not sure. At some point, it will be.
How far ahead did you plan your remodels in business? Could they be out five years?
Oh, no.
Quicker than that?
Yeah.
That's, that's the beauty of business.
We buy a target building, for example, and tear it all down, or something, remodel it.
That's, that's the challenge of this, if we don't think we're doing it anytime soon, this could be obsolete information.
Uh, I don't think so.
Might, and some of it's gonna be helpful, but we don't know what 10 years looks like, or eight years, or five years.
Two years ago, what did we spend on the initial study of that, for the eight, nine million dollars?
Did I say 12,000?
Something like that.
But that was looking at every property.
Yeah, you were looking at
That, that was just
That was overall concept.
Looking at 20 years out, what do we think our staffing levels are gonna be? What offices do you think we're gonna need? And then building, uh, or designing a facility around that.
But that, that 12,000, did it just include City Hall, that included public works?
Yep, public works. Public works, just buildings for public works and, and City Hall. Parks, it's assumed it's gonna move into the McCarty Park metal building that is on the west side of the park, or west side of the maintenance shed.
So Josh, just assuming that, uh, for the most part, the, the building or buildings are structurally sound, would you envision more or less a, uh, gut it, gut it all out and, uh, remodel from that? Or, or doing some other concept? What would you do?
You know, I think that would, that would come down to, well, one, where an addition would be, and how that would play into the current layout. You know, if you'd have to knock out walls to get a hallway connection or something, if it was to go on the north side. For example, that might offset a lot of the current PD offices, just to make that space then work with the addition. Now, I mean, I, I will say throughout the process, and when we'd be doing the floor plan, we would be working with you all to understand kind of what level of finish, you know, if, if there are spaces, if we're just like, hey, the goal is to maintain as much of the finishes as we can, we certainly would take that into consideration. And we're not gonna go in, assuming wreck it all down, start from scratch on the inside. We'll be realistic with how it would be laid out.
That would be an option, though.
It would be an option, certainly would be. Yeah, I mean, once we do the structural analysis, I think that would be a big piece to understand if there are any load-bearing walls, or columns, or whatnot.
So do you ever like, go like, say, okay, what can we get done for 500,000? Can you work it backwards too? Or does that not work in that kind of process?
You certainly can, um
Not a good way to do it, but
No, I think
You know, the, the major cost is going to be in whatever addition is, is, you know, the tear down and the remodel and that, but whatever the addition is, that's what your major cost is gonna come in.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, again, I, I think, I think the city at some point is gonna need this, and I think we should at least have it in place. And that's why I would be a proponent of, of going through task one and task two.
Yeah.
So is that money coming from what you guys budgeted for, or is this gonna be the general fund? Is this a part of the 80,000 that you already budgeted for?
It's in the, we would take it out of the general government buildings.
Yeah, there's money there.
So in task one, you've got generating a 3D scan of the existing buildings. No offense, but that sounds really expensive, is that necessary? But tell me what it is, and then
So the 3D scan, so from what I recall, we didn't have great existing drawings. I think we were working on like a floor plan with like a hand sketch of where the addition was. So the 3D scan would be, it, we bring in and get an actual, build a 3D model, understanding exactly what's going on behind the walls, down to, I mean, that thing's down to like the 16th of an inch or something, so we would take that, we'd have documented how much space you have, where these walls are, understand what's going on inside walls even, like what kind of structure it looks like. So it's really, it's, it's the first step in generating that existing base map, I guess, what we'd be working with, because if you're gonna be adding on, you need to understand kind of what's going on with the building. And since there's no existing drawings, that would be creating those, essentially.
Surprise, surprise. Do we have any road problems in our buildings?
Not that I've seen.
Road problems.
Road bugs.
Well, not rats, mice.
We have bugs.
You've got spiders, okay. Yeah, there's a few.
Because I'm not ever coming over there if there's any mice, so that's another way.
We got rats.
Yeah, you go down to, I guess, the old basement, and there's spider webs all over, I knocked down on my way down, and the back wall's crumbling. Yeah.
So Josh, how, what do you do to create that 3D scan?
So we have a, I don't know the technical term, but it's basically a 3D scanner, for lack of a better term, but it's a, it's a piece of equipment that we, you bring into the, um, building, and you set it at different areas in the building, and it takes a 3D
Laser.
Yeah, laser scanning.
It's cool.
Yeah.
Realtors do it, they do it in crime scenes, a lot of crime scene units around the country have 3D scanners.
Yeah, and it essentially builds a 3D model of the building itself.
What, do you have a bag there, do you want one?
Well, Dave mentioned that they use 3D scanners in investigations. Now, I was just letting him know.
No.
No.
Well, what are the wishes of the council?
I would, uh, I, I'd make a proposal that we go ahead with task one, task two. I would like a, you know, before moving from task one to task two, an update, um, on where that's at. And so I would, I would support moving, moving ahead with that proposal.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second to move ahead with task one and two with a report after task one, and then moving into task two.
Is that, is that your motion, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. So what would we have after task one?
I guess that it's possible that we can, we can go forward. Or I know that we ain't got a ghost chance in using what we have.
So you're saying you want to update?
Just in a, an
Saying that that's what we follow?
Yeah, we've completed task one, we're ready to move on to task two. We, you know, they might, they might say, yeah, we do, we do think that it's feasible to to remodel, add on to, and what have you. Or they will come and they, they will say, we don't think it's feasible to do that. And then task two wouldn't happen, we'd have to figure out a different task to
Well, task two could happen, it would just be tearing down and building new here.
Yeah.
I mean
So feasibility study.
We, we would probably then have to move to task three and figure out whether we could do it.
Okay, so we work on the CIP list at budget time, right?
We'll do it this spring, yeah.
Okay. So, soon. So if we didn't do this, what would we have to work from? We'd just have to like put it on the back burner and ignore it for a while again? We've done that with a lot of things, and now we're playing catch-up.
I, I just think this is a, this city needs to, you know, to, to look in the future. And, and I, I don't think it has to, I mean, I, I can see this being out a couple of years, I really can. I mean, I, maybe not, but, uh, we gotta figure it out, so.
Well, yeah, gotta figure out
How to pay for it, absolutely.
Is it here, is it remodeled here, is it, you know, raised?
I think, I, I think you're gonna find that this is a very remodelable solution, I really do. I've seen, seen that many times.
You see worse?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I will say this, I, I understand, you know, maybe that, you know, need for this, because it does, but I still struggle, we'll see what, what comes back, because I feel like there is so many infrastructure needs, and I just fill out the slots on the face to our residents to say, we'll see what it comes back at, but I feel like there's so much other money to spend on.
And there again, you know, the, uh, the plan going forward, that it's a living document and to be reviewed every year.
And changed.
The capital group.
Capital group, yeah. And, uh, because different things change. Revenue streams change, they go up, sometimes they go down, you have to review it anyway. So this is, this is at least getting it, moving in that direction, so that we're not 20 years down the road still arguing about them.
Concept.
And floor plans don't inspire
No, right.
If you draw floor plans, they're good until we can afford them, essentially.
Yeah.
Prices might go overdone depending on the budget climate that we're in, but once the floor plans are done, a change would be a over
Cost.
A new idea of some sort.
Or different staffing. Again, Vicki mentioned the fluidity, um, you know, in five years, we might be using cubicles and just have offices for meeting spaces. You know, I don't know, things just change, I just, I feel it's too soon. If we don't have it on a radar to accomplish, I feel like there's too many variables with pricing of construction, with RVs. We don't know what those are. That's just me though.
So do we think this would be the last study being done on this project?
Yes.
It is not a proposal.
Study.
On, on a city bulk comp?
Yes, I'd like it to be all
Well, we'll have brand-new construction, which needs to be modified. We'd have a comparison with renovation, so I'm not sure what other choices we'd have to look at. So at least it'll, it'll give us something to talk about, something to compare.
I think a lot of the comparisons that you could do would be just locations.
And you've got a good loca, this is a good location, with the additional land that was purchased, this is a good location, use it.
You know, other locations are very difficult. You know, schools and churches take up a lot of our prime real estate, and we're limited in what we have available for commercial. So we really don't want to take prime commercial property to generate sales tax and plop a tax-exempt building on it.
Well, plus, you're gonna spend a half a million dollars to buy a piece of ground. And we've already paid for this, so. Well, we do have a motion and a second, are there any other questions? Otherwise, I would call for a roll call vote.
Sure. Clerk?
May.
David?
May.
Fish?
Yes.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Well, I have mixed feelings on this, but I am, I don't know, I, I really want to see what we have available to us.
I feel as well.
Motion carries.
Oh, no, it's gonna, uh, it's gonna be longer than two years.
It might be. Think that's the only item we have on the agenda, Brian?
It is.
Motion and a second? Have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yes.
Thank you.
So when you're done with task one, you're gonna give us an update, or you guys will give us an update and say they're moving forward floor plans, or they said, they don't even bother?
Task one is a feasibility study.
You gotta start, you gotta start somewhere.